Hello.
Yes.
We're calling for a new order, so your conversation would probably get recorded over the bars to be closer to the camera. We are being recorded, not live, but if you're watching us, it's at some later date. And Jesse Adams is not able to make it today, but Council Clerk is here, and Paul Spector, the chair of the committee, so we have a forum. The first order of business is approved in minutes from our previous meeting.
I move to approve.
And I will second in all the favor.
Aye.
And the second piece is a reconsideration. This is a continuation of the discussion. We actually voted on this already in City Council on the taking of Center Court. And so that appeared because we continued that. It's kind of, unless you may have something more to say on it, but it was continued because it was already on the agenda in the last meeting as something we continue to discuss. We already took a vote on it in City Council. If you have any more to add to that or want to say about that, that would be fine.
Well, the first thing I want to ask is, do we want to do public comment now before we get it to the agenda? Or, because I think both of these folks are here about the Florence beautification.
Yeah, and what generally I do is, you can, I thought that was the case, and so sorry about that, but when we come to that agenda item, you're welcome to just join right into the conversation if that's okay in a more formal way.
Can we maybe move it up in the agenda so that these guys can just talk about the other details?
Sure, we'll move it to the next item. So reconsideration of the taking of Center Court? Do you have anything more to add?
So I guess there were just some questions at the last meeting about what the next steps are. And I was hoping that Mr. Huntley would be here, Director Huntley would be here to just give us kind of an overview again.
Do you mean from the meeting? Because this was forwarded before the Council took its vote, and then the Council took its vote. So when it was forwarded, we, I think, assumed there was still not going to be a vote on the Council. That was my recollection.
Well, I did take the question forward to the mayor and to Director Huntley. And the way that I understand it now is that the Department of Public Works is doing the survey and creating some kind of guidelines for how the taking can happen. My question still remains, though, is this something that we, as a council, will need to vote on again? Do we, as a committee, need to make a recommendation to the council once we get the plans from the Department of Public Works? But that's why I was hoping for some clarification today.
Generally, I will clarify that. In my experience, Mike, you can chime in here, in my experience, once we vote on this, we do not vote again on the actual, it goes back to whatever the department is. We don't tend to vote then on the details of whatever we have initiated and voted on, but I will clarify that.
The issue being, though, that we, as a council, voted not to accept the recommendation of the DPW. Does that necessarily mean that we're voting to take Center Court? I don't think that that necessarily follows from our having voted not to accept the initial recommendation. So that was my ongoing question with this piece, just what the procedure is.
Okay, so a question like that, one thing you could also do is call directly, again, as you've already done, and call the mayor, or you can call Ned Huntley and ask him what the process is.
Thinking maybe the city solicitor might need to look into it as well.
Yeah. Being our clerk, do you have any, you've been involved in these things, do you have any thoughts on the process here?
Well, my understanding from the last meeting that took place, I mean, this is back in April, so some time has passed, or this committee has met, but Ned Huntley indicated that he had given the order, and they were working on drawing up plans for the Center Court taking. So it was his understanding, I think, at the time that, you know, the City Council wanted to move forward with that, and that it would eventually go back to council once the order of taking had been done and the plans had been worked up as well. But I think that there were some, you know, some unanswered questions about, well, what does that process actually look like? And, you know, who is going to be taking the reins on that, so.
Yeah, my recommendation is, I think we need to either, maybe we have Ned, I don't think it necessarily is a city solicitor who I could call, but maybe we should invite Ned or, this would be Rich Parsalletti, who would be the person who would take charge of this, do you know him?
No, I think it would be the director.
It would be the director, maybe for our next meeting, we should request Ned's presence here, because I think we need his expertise. Unless, I certainly still will call and make sure, and if it's a very simple answer, I'll get it back to you, we'll see.
I actually did have this kind of conversation with Director Huntley and the mayor, and I just have to look back at it, unfortunately, I don't have my laptop with me to verify today, so it might be useful for us, and even just to get an update about what's happening with there, with the DPW's work around it. It'd be good to have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How did you get to DPW if it hadn't gotten out of committee?
What's that?
How did you get to City Council if it hadn't gotten out of committee?
Because we...
I'm just curious.
It's not necess, it didn't, it didn't need the vote of this committee in order, some things do not need the vote of this committee in order to go. They were voting on a number of street issues, is my recollection.
Was it part of the 30 streets that got voted in and to be accepted as streets?
Robert, it came to the council as a recommendation that we not accept it, so we not do the taking. So then it went back, and when we decided to not make that recommendation, or accept that recommendation, it had to go back to the DPW, so that's why it's there. It's not, this is more just informational within this committee, it's not like...
Just curious, sorry.
I don't, did we vote, we, when, this committee has reconstituted itself just since January, is that correct? I don't remember, but my memory is not good, on whether we voted on all of the various street in the other committee, in the joint, so those didn't come through the committee, those went straight to the council. So the former committee, which was the joint City Council Public Works Committee, did not, specifically did not look at the individual street things as recommendations. So I think that it kind of followed that same pattern, didn't care about our recommendation or not. Okay, so we'll have, we'll continue to follow up on this. So let's move, if it's okay, as you're requesting, it's fine with me to move the Downtown Florence Beautification Committee to...
I don't know how I got that name.
We'll move the beautification to...
So maybe I can just introduce this a little bit.
Sure, please.
And let you guys know what is going on here. So somebody in Ward 7 contacted me, Betsy, if I can introduce herself in a minute, saying that she was interested in addressing some of the things that she kind of identified in Downtown Florence as needing a little bit of attention, and there were dead and dying trees, one of them has been removed since we met a week and a half ago, and just wants to do kind of a civic volunteer kind of project to do some beautification. So I told her I thought it was a great idea, but that I would hook her up with the Florence Civic and Business Association. She had some ideas that she'll tell us all about, about who else to contact. In the meantime, completely coincidentally, another Ward 7 resident contacted me saying, "I'm concerned about the state of the trees and kind of the lack of any kind of beautification of Downtown Florence," completely coincidentally, three or four days after Betsy and I met. So I hooked them up as well. And so I put this here, because I know that the Department of Public Works needs to be involved, I'm glad to see that Robert is here from the Florence Civic and Business Association, just so that we can have a little bit of a discussion. Again, it's unfortunate that Director Huntley isn't here, because I think that he or Mr. Lorlela could be very, you know, useful to this discussion. I don't know if you got responses to the emails that you sent to them, but it's just an opportunity for us to hear a little bit about what Ms. Alden has in mind, and, you know, where this might go, and also, of course, to hear from Robert, representing, I guess, the Florence Civic and Business Association.
Great.
Good. So my name is Betsy Alden, I live at...
Either you can stand at the podium or you can sit with us, or...
Well, we're trying to, we want to get you on camera as the thing, so that if you can either bring a chair forward here or stand at the podium, that would be...
Oh, y'all want to read your presentation, sorry.
We shouldn't have put the chair up there, sorry.
That's okay.
Just send a sideline of the camera.
Sure. Yeah. So I'm Betsy Alden, I live at 25 Sterling Road in Florence, right near JFK Middle School, and I'm an avid walker around Florence, and I've lived in Amherst and Hadley as well, and done some projects, particularly in Hadley, but I just had noticed how some of the downtown was looking a little disheveled. And if you walked around and you saw, like, in front of the post office, there was the dead tree, and weeds, and these little, look like public spots, they're like, they're like three feet by three feet, or four feet by four feet. And I just thought, wouldn't it be nice if we could do some better trees? The trees that are there, around the four corners of Florence, I know that they're dying. I'm not sure of what, one did die, as you noted. And so I am an avid gardener, and I just thought it would be a nice project that I could perhaps do with whomever, I don't care, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. The idea of the beautification committee came from looking at what other towns and cities do in this regard, and there's certain things in Florence that I think would be very nice to do, like doing a garden in front of JFK Middle School, right where the sign is, there's nothing really there. And there's a cemetery area at Spring Grove that I'd love to do a woodland garden near some folks who are indigent, who don't have stones down there. So there's a variety of things, it's just that the center of Florence, we have that new building going in, looks something very nice, and I just thought it would be time to spruce up the village a little bit, and obviously, in concert with whomever, it doesn't, I'm not looking to, I'm just looking for some pretty nice things to go on there.
Also, just want to add to the list of folks that we kind of made connections with, that we also connected with Lily Lombard.
Yes, and I haven't been in touch with her yet.
She might still be out of the country, I know she was, she was abroad. As the new chair of the newly restored Tree Committee, I bet she would be an important person to have as part of that discussion as well.
Great.
And that is Rich Parsalletti, who's the tree warden for the city, for DPW would also be involved, I have the Tree Committee.
Right.
And I missed the answer, Lisa gave you some contacts, and did you get any responses? I didn't see whether you said yes or no to responses to, did you write to Ned Huntley and others?
No, no, I haven't done, I really haven't done anything other than respond to the gentleman, Eric Howard, who, he and I are going to get together Friday morning just to walk around and see what he's doing.
He's the other board president.
Yes, but I haven't formally done anything, because I didn't know if it was okay to do anything, or what the process is, and working with the Business Civic Association, and I don't want to step on any toes, I just want to see if this might be a nice thing to do.
You can say, "Oh, wait, that is true."
Well, I can.
But you're old, anytime you're, anytime you're ready.
I will, I will.
It sounds like your counselor sent you a good direction.
Yes.
And is trying to kind of, I'm not sure of what role, beyond, it's great to know about this, that this committee can play.
Well, again, it's kind of, it's unfortunate, our new configuration of this committee, because without Director Huntley here, or the city engineer, Jim Lorlela, who would probably be involved in this, maybe Rich Parsalletti, who's the superintendent of streets, those are all folks that kind of have some sense of a map of the city and what kinds of projects go on, and as I said, Rich Parsalletti is also the tree warden, so those are people that can kind of give us a little bit of insight into what the process might be.
The question is whether we, yeah, I think your idea of first making those contacts and seeing, because it may be that we don't even have a role to play except to be cheerleaders here, so I would suggest too, making perhaps some of those contacts with Ned Huntley or with Rich Parsalletti, with Lily Lombard. You already are making those contacts with others who might be interested, and...
But let me just, is that city property? Is, are those sidewalks city property? Okay, so we would need to go through the city in order to, the trees would have to be selected by the city, they'd have to be planted by DPW, I mean, we could do our own work.
For a little bit of a recap on this, if it's the tree that I think you're talking about, the director in front of the post office.
Yeah.
It already has been replaced.
It has.
Why don't you come forward to, so that we have your experience, and you just kind of give your take on this as an idea, because you're so involved in the center of Florence.
Well, we actually did, the biggest problem we have, we have all these great ideas, public resources, which is individuals, people to actually do the work. Like, we do the, Civic Association does the planning of the town, so it's on Pulaski, it's Pulaski Park, and, you know, it just gets me to water that regularly, so the business trial is a big deal. So, I mean, you have these great vicious, vicious plans, but then the follow-up work has to be done.
Right.
And I'm concerned about those trees too. Strangely enough, I pull out of my street, and I, as I pointed out in my email, the two maples where we put the bus stop, which was a nice shady spot to put the bus stop, one of those two maples that I think probably belong in Valley, that I will not, the city have died.
Yeah.
And you mentioned something about trees, and as I'm driving to work, I realize that all the red maples on, whether it's starvation from water deprivation, or there's actually some sort of parasite, but I didn't notice it initially, because those trees are sometimes like booming Eddie ham, but they actually, a lot of the tops have, have, and those trees have been there for, oh, probably close to 40 years.
Yeah. They all look, for some odd reason, the ones along the street, North Maple and Elm, they're all die, they look like they're dying, but they just don't look like they are...
Well, they also, they may have outgrown their environment, so they don't get a whole lot, urban trees don't get a whole lot of water.
Yeah.
That's other, if you can get stewards to even water the trees that are starting to release.
So that would certainly be, as you recommended, something, I would contact Lily Lombard and the Tree Committee, because that would certainly be in their purview, and they could maybe raise it up to a high priority for them to take a look, get an answer, Rich, take a look and say, "What is it? Is it the life of a tree? Is it not being..."
Maybe trees go there, and they...
Maybe they don't, maybe they're not the right trees for that place, but that would be, they should, and Rich should have that kind of expertise, and certainly some of the members of the Tree Committee have that kind of expertise.
Okay. The other thing that you had talked to me about, Betsy, was maybe being in touch with some of the businesses downtown, and that's something that, you know, I think it's important to be and to do in concert with the Business Civic and Business Association, to see if they want to donate some money, some things, maybe some services, maybe the gardening services that they use could stretch a little beyond Florence Savings Bank purview, and so I think that that is something to consider, and for you two to talk about the city as well, because I think that could be a whole added component, and also to have the different businesses kind of invested in the beautification of the center of Florence.
I do think that there are citizens out there in Florence who would like to be involved in this, so I think the manpower part of it could be solved if we could just get organized, whether it's as a subgroup under your group, or whatever, I, you know, it doesn't matter to me, I just, I think there are people out there, you know, who would be interested in being volunteers, and to make, to make whatever we do be as labor unintensive as possible, so that we plant things that are more natural to the environment here, New England, and so on and so forth, so. So that's really what the Florence Beautification Committee agenda item was, is, and I'm not sure where to go next, other than Lily for trees, Robert and I can talk about...
There's been, there's been two other planting products that have happened in Florence. One was spearheaded by, it was pretty much Mr. Shea, who owns Doyle's Package Store, and somebody, what's his, what's her name? It was a woman that did planting, she did pot, pot plants, and it got just to a woman named, I don't remember her name.
No.
She's a massage therapist, yes.
Oh, does she live on Oak Street?
No, she lives right upstairs from Birds, in that block right there. And she, actually, for a long time, she did pot plants around that part of the block, and it was great, but it was, it was a lot of, it was a lot of work. And previous to that, there was a planting committee of some sorts that was spearheaded by Keshian, where they, that we, they sponsored flower pots throughout downtown, and those men are included, that, yeah, for that, for Chamber, for Robert, that's in downtown.
You are the counselor from downtown?
No, I'm not actually, David Murphy is.
Yeah, so what I was gonna...
You are, are you, well, part of downtown, you come, you come all the way to Maple, to Maple Street.
Right up to the Civic Center, and I don't even go that far.
You don't go to Maple Street anymore?
No, that's Ward 5, it's with the reconfiguration, the redistricting, it's not... She did include... I only did one side of North Maple, and not North Maple Main Street, and then part of the other side of Main Street, but where it's still coming to be.
Okay, now I won't fault you for your uninvolved.
Yeah, right.
Because I really thought you came all the way to Maple Street.
Because it actually follows up what I was going to say, which is, I mean, I've had experience with this with different parts in my ward. Your point person is really, would probably be your counselor, who would hopefully help you, as you have already helped, connect people up, direct you to the right places to go, and help you to do that, and so if it's David Murphy, then I would get hold of David Murphy as well, and...
He was included on that.
Yes, David Murphy was, and I actually, I sprayed it even, even larger to include the director of Wood Park, John.
Yes, you did.
John. Florence Savings Bank, Monica Kern is the marketing director of Florence Savings Bank, she was actually one of the few that wrote back to me, she wanted to know why she included, and I said, "I want to keep her on the loop," because I also want to tell you that, I did self tell you that they do go a little beyond by doing both those, they do both the gardens on the gateway sides of Florence, the one in front of them, the one in Pulaski Park and the one on Trinity Road Park.
So my suggestion would be, I would talk to David Murphy, and I would ask him if he could have a meeting, rather than this meeting, which is a more formal setup, but a more informal meeting, pull all you guys together, invite somebody from DPW who's right, and that would be, if I was the counselor in the ward, that would be what I would suggest and do, pull people together. We certainly are here more as a, kind of, as a City Council group, that if something comes forward and you might need, there might be some kind of change in ordinance, there might be something else that you would need from a larger group, but that would be where I would go, because we're not kind of set up to help you guys do that organizational piece, which I think would be important.
And I'm happy to continue to play a role too.
There you go. Then he won't fault you anymore at all. Extra credit.
That's, that's not what I meant. Sometimes my words come out mixed, but I meant that, that I really thought that you were one of the, one of the downtown, one of the downtown Florence Council, and that seems quite dramatic.
Maybe that's the most important part of this discussion. Clear?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for taking the initiative.
And then hopefully, down the road, yeah, taking the initiative, and then down the road, maybe when some of this, we'll have you come back in just to kind of give a presentation.
I was hoping you were going to complain about the cracked, the cracked sidewalks too, and the horrible asphalt repairs in front of, like, the soft surface, which is, I think, the problem's too much salt, actually.
Well, thank you.
Well, that is, now that's, that's the kind of issue too, that after, if you were to talk to them, and you don't, we could come back and talk specifically on that.
Okay. So is this a spin out, is this from when the reorganization of all committees, like the DPW changing its role?
We used to be the joint City Council BPW Commission, was it a commission?
Committee.
I think it was.
I think we were a committee.
And with the reorganization, it's just the Public Works Committee, and we no longer have the DPW folks to meet with, and the staff from DPW doesn't come to a meeting unless we request it at this point, they used to come mandatorily to those meetings.
And some of us, like a lot of the reorganization, but we don't particularly like that piece.
This one doesn't, yeah, this one, it seems like it kind of fell through the cracks.
No, we felt, I was on that committee for years, and thought it was a great committee, and I miss it, and I miss the fact that, for example, we didn't normally would, back then, we would have had Jim Lorlela here, we would have had Ned Huntley here, we would have been meeting over at the DPW building, and we could have grabbed Rich Parsalletti, so I miss the old...
Well, I was trying to figure it out, I was worried that I was told the wrong place, because, maybe it's because there was nobody here, I was like, "Maybe it's supposed to be at the, at the DPW," but thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you both.
So we'll do, now this is going to be the last agenda item, which is a request for an update on the solar arrays at Glendale Landfill. Is this why you came, or did you want to, because I'm going to give some update on it, if you'd like.
No, I didn't come with any, I got six to deliver.
So the update is a broader, a broader update about what's happening with, I'm going to call it, and these may not be the correct term, freestanding large solar arrays in the western part of Massachusetts. So, and can stop me if this, if you both heard this, the whole thing of what's going on, just, because I think this is very important, not just for us, not just for the landfill, but it's very important for alternative energy, and it's very important for our whole efforts around climate change in the entire state of Massachusetts. So as you know, Northampton has been a leader, not just in the state, but almost nationally known for its solar per capita, the amount of solar we have here, it's been pretty amazing. And that is mostly, has been rooftop solar. So when legis, and that will continue, that's not being affected by some recent changes. So when the legislation a number of years ago came through in terms of, in projecting about solar, and in that legislation requiring the utility companies, each of the various utility companies in the state had a certain amount of solar energy that they had to buy, that continues on all of the rooftop dwellings. So part of that legislation said, if the building itself, the structure itself, was using the electricity, then there's, I don't know if it's unlimited, there's some point of which, but that's not being affected in the legislation. What they did say in that legislation was there was a percentage that the utility company had, that they needed to buy, that was produced by these freestanding units. Now, when this was through, as I look back and talk to Peter Kokut, you know, nobody thought, say, eight, 10 years ago, that solar would take off like it did in Massachusetts and also throughout the country. People, it was way too expensive, people thought, so they had this figure of 20%. So it was basically saying, and I'm oversimplifying, so don't quote me on this, but I think the legislation basically said, you as the utility company, each of these various utility companies in different parts of the state, you must buy from these freestanding units 20% of your electricity, up to 20%, you need to buy solar. Well, we, and we're the only ones to do this, it's in this part of the state where we have now, and everybody is flabbergasted going, "Oh my God, nobody projected," they said, "20% is never going to happen," you know? Remember back when Dick Cheney was talking about, "You'll never get more than 2%," I read a quote from, "You'll never get nationwide more than 2% in solar, in any country, right? Germany now is getting, what, 65%?" So it happened in a way that's great, unfortunately, the legislation says the utility company now doesn't have to buy from our utility, the ones who provide us electricity, they've reached the max. So they're not guaranteeing they will buy any electricity in western Massachusetts in the areas they cover. And you have not only the landfill, but you have multiple projects that were ready to go. And the landfill, for example, as Mike, you probably know, the RFP was all written, sent out, and they actually started having bids coming in, there still are bids coming in, they're looking at them. I mean, and they were great bids, because prices, it's going way down on panels, continues to. But unfortunately, until something happens, either through some agreement that the governor is supposedly the last, I talked to Peter Kokut, let me back up, when I first talked to Peter Kokut and Stan Rosenberg, Bill and I had discussions with them separately, neither of them were very optimistic that anything was going to happen. I mean, it was, it was kind of a tragedy. You know, here are you guys, we've been talking about the solar array on the landfill, it's kind of one of the positive things of closing the landfill environmentally, and kind of felt, this is going to just, you know, we were telling, it's not going to happen. In addition, and that's a very, I forgot how many acres that, that array is, but it's a good sized array, and there are three or four others I know about, which are even larger in this part of the state. I mean, it's really a shame. I mean, it's really a shame.
How, why is it, why can't the, any excess electricity be shared? Why can't we aggregate it and share it with other nonprofits or organizations?
Okay, so, let me, I'll get to that. Very, this is very complex stuff, so on the Energy Commission, we, I mean, we spent a lot of hours, even Chris Mason goes, "It's very intricate," but I'll try and explain it as best I can. So, they were very pessimistic two months ago about the hope of any of these things, that the legislative, partially because the governor's big push is to bring in hydro. We have a whole thing happening now with the pipeline, the natural gas, replacing electric output, probably even, these all tie in together. Probably when Yankee Nuclear is converted, it'll be converted to natural gas, maybe even made into a bigger plant. You also have competing forces that the wind folks from the eastern part of the state are competing to get the utility companies to buy that alternative source of energy. I mean, it's unfortunate that we're kind of fighting about this, and there isn't a comprehensive overview, which would have to be either come from the legislature or the governor to say, "Let's really increase our amount of alternative energy. Yeah, let's bring the hydro down. Yeah, let's have solar. Yeah, let's have wind power." That would seem like the logical thing to do. Let's pass new legislation requiring all of the utilities or an aggregate, a new bill that says, "Wait a minute, let's just make it an aggregate." It would seem to be. At that point, both Peter and Stan just said, "Yeah, that may be great, but, you know, it ain't going to happen in the next 20 years, not like that." However, when I spoke to Peter two or three weeks ago, he was more optimistic. And the reason, since speaking to some folks at Northeast Solar and other places, the reason there's a little more hope is that, number one, I think it's because there's a big industry in solar. It's way bigger than just little places like Northeast Solar. There are some very big corporate interests now, and we can not like that in some ways, because I like having local businesses like Northeast bringing it to the local economy. But what happens is when you have a big corporation or you have somebody like Goldman Sachs putting a lot of money into solar projects in the state, I'm not sure they're the ones here, but there's somebody like that, that you have a little bit of clout, and you have lobbyists fighting to say, I forgot the number, I think there are like 18,000 people working in solar in Massachusetts. It's a lot of people involved. So, Peter said he thinks the governor is going to offer some kind of plan, that he's talking with the utility companies right now, and they're trying to come up with some kind of plan. To defend the utility companies just a little bit, one of the things that, when the legislation went through, one of the things we're asking the utility company to do is we're saying, "We'll build this, almost like another power plant out in the landfill, and we're going to use your infrastructure that you paid for," which is the utility company. And so, there may be, and there are these SRECs, these socially responsible energy credits, that you're going to even have to give so that people get benefit because you're doing a socially good thing by producing this alternative energy. You're going to actually have to pay people a little bit to do that, and they're going to use all of your infrastructure. And the utility companies are saying, "We don't think it's fair that we should have to pay this anymore. That was an incentive to get solar moving." Peter Koch had even, we've talked about it, we said, "You know what? It actually served that purpose. Solar is certainly smart. Is it ready to kind of be, live on its own without the incentives? Questionable. I wish they would continue." But Peter said, "One thing that may happen is what you'd see is either the SRECs are going to go away, or you'll have, and/or also, instead of getting money, maybe there's going to be some kind of percentage or fee, hopefully very low, to compensate the utility companies for the use of their infrastructure." What we hope doesn't happen are, like, some of the very conservative midwesterns, Oklahoma, I think, passed this. This is kind of a Koch Brothers involvement. What they're doing is they're getting bills passed where if you put up solar, you have to pay a huge amount. Okay, we put up this infrastructure over the last 80, 100 years, and we're going to charge you this enormous amount. It's actually making, it's the opposite of SRECs. We're saying, "We're going to make it almost prohibitively expensive for you to do solar." That's not going to happen here. So, a little more optimism, but probably won't have the SRECs. When it comes up to the more logical thing, which is, why don't they aggregate it? And we talk about that in the Energy Commission. An even bigger question is, why do we have a comprehensive energy plan that involves both the electric companies or simultaneously saying, "We're not going to let you build these big solar arrays, freestanding solar arrays. We're going to stop those." Right? Almost because, "We got enough electricity, we don't want to buy it from you. We're not going to do that." And you have the gas company who are saying, "Well, one of the reasons we need a new pipeline in this part of the state, one of the reasons we need to do that is we're doing all this conversion of electric utilities who use coal, and we're changing them over to natural gas, and Yankee Pilgrim is going from nuclear to natural gas, so we need a much more natural gas to produce more electricity." It's really getting all of these folks to start having a conversation, and we don't have that in the state. So, maybe this summer, there would be some kind of, something that comes together, probably without the SRECs, says Peter, that hopefully by the fall, these projects could then start again. That's...
So, the SRECs would be taken away from homeowners and people that have already installed solar?
Like me.
Like me?
Yeah, it's possible.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's possible.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, just one last thing on the SRECs piece. I installed my unit like four years ago. My next door neighbor, two years later, installed the same exact unit, same exact sign, same company did it, and he spent 40% less. So, there's part of this that the cost of it has come down enough, that's what is being argued, that do we really need the SRECs? And it is, I think it's a legitimate argument.
Except you probably had more incentives than he did when he did it, I would bet. No? Because we installed ours in 2003, and we had 50% of the cost cut.
Oh, you were, yeah, you got, we were... Oh, you were, you were a pioneer. Oh, God, 2003. There wasn't even a sun. Was the sun here in 2003?
All right.
So, any additions to that or questions that...
No, that's very, very cogent explanation.
We're certainly working on it in the Energy Commission. It's coming up all the time. This, this whole way that this is working of net metering, it's incredibly complex. The legislation's incredibly complex.
Fascinating. It seems to build interesting politics behind a fascinating industry.
Yeah. All right.
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, I second that, and let's adjourn. Mike, thanks for...